To the July 29th, 2025, meeting of the planning board. First, we'll take a roll call to introduce board members and staff. Mike Daudarian.
Here.
Phil Giordano.
I'm here.
Maureen Collins-White.
Here.
Sean Weller.
Here.
We are also joined by Elijah Romulus, our town planner, Jess Cole, our recording secretary, and Evan Cardamino from Westwood Media Center. This meeting is recorded by Westwood Media Center and broadcast live on local cable television Comcast Channel 6 and Verizon Channel 42. Meetings are also live on the Western Media Center's YouTube channel. If you're interested in joining the meeting via Zoom, you can find the login directions in the planning board meeting notice that is posted to the calendar section of the town's webpage at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot townhall dot westwood dot MA dot US forward slash. We will begin the meeting with only the board members and staff unmuted and on video. As the chair recognizes individuals to speak, we will unmute them. Board members may choose to mute themselves when they are not speaking in order to minimize background noise. For applications, the chair will first invite the applicant to address the board and give a presentation summarizing what is being requested. Board members receive the application materials prior to the meeting and will have reviewed them. Board members may ask questions during and following the presentation. Staff and outside experts will provide comments to the board. If the issue includes a public hearing, the board will then proceed to the public comment portion of the public hearing and will restate the instructions. In this remote meeting format, residents and guests may participate in several ways. Attendees should raise their hand and wait to be unmuted and recognized to speak over the Zoom meeting application or from a telephone dial-up. We will be able to hear you but not see you. Additionally, comments may be submitted by email or regular mail prior to the meeting. When we come to that part of the meeting, I will remind everyone of the process. Following the public comment portion, the board will deliberate and make a decision or continue the hearing to a specific future date. All remote meetings require that votes be taken by roll call. When a motion and second has been made, the chair will ask if there's any further discussion before proceeding to a roll call vote and will then restate the results of the vote. Okay, Elijah, do we have any changes to our agenda this evening?
No changes to the agenda.
Wonderful. All right, then our first agenda item is 2020 Comprehensive Plan Implementation Updates. Tonight, we have folks from the Dedham Westwood Water District, also known as DWWD. Uh, do we have, I thought I saw Steve Locke was here.
Uh, yes.
Great.
Um, to give a brief overview for the board and anyone listening, uh, the town of Westwood underwent a comprehensive plan update in 2020. Uh, with that plan, there were, uh, action steps that were associated with different departments, agencies, and stakeholders. And so, uh, last year, we began with, uh, uh, receiving updates from, uh, said stakeholders and agencies and departments. And, uh, a part of that meant that we had, uh, different folks, uh, coming to, uh, specific planning board meetings to provide those updates. Uh, we are rounding it out with, uh, DWWD as well as, uh, the Commission on Disability. And, uh, as we look to do a biannual update, uh, we will begin this process again, uh, in the spring, summer of next year, uh, with the, uh, full slate of, um, of, uh, interested parties. And anyone who is interested in, uh, reviewing this, they can, uh, go online to our website. You can, uh, search for comprehensive, uh, plan. And, uh, it should pull up the 2020, uh, plan. And without further ado, I'll pass it to, uh, you, manager.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful. Uh, Steve, nice to see you. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thanks for inviting us. Uh, I would appreciate the opportunity to, uh, explain to the folks of Westwood what we, our, uh, plans are for the near future to maybe explain a little about our conservation plans, uh, climate, um, climate, uh, change and how we're dealing with that and how we try to be fiscally responsible as well while we go through this. Oh, uh, we have a brief summary and I did have a presentation. Um, if I could, uh, share my screen, I'd like to get going and explain some of the things we have planned for the near future.
Thanks much.
Have that ability.
We good with the screen sharing or do we need to work something out there?
I'm hitting the share button.
Hmm.
Um, I can, uh, I, I have it here, so I could, I could.
Okay, that'd be great.
Alright. I'm just opening the file now and, uh, let's share my screen shortly. Alright. It's start. Right. Here we go.
If you don't know me, I am Steve Locke, uh, the operations manager here at Dedham Westwood Water District. I have, uh, been part of the water district for 25 years. And, um, I'll get right to our, uh, our next slide, which is, uh, explain some of the water, uh, infrastructure projects that we have going on. Uh, you are well aware of this as the planning board that, uh, you know, we are, uh, starting to, um, construct our, we're actually having our pre-construction meeting for the resin filter, uh, building to remove, uh, PFAS at our University Ave plant. We'll be having a pre-construction meeting, uh, in mid Oc- uh, August. And just to, uh, kind of let you know, that was a 15.5 million dollar project, which, uh, it did blow up honestly from, uh, what originally was projected to be 8.3 million. But, um, the district did secure a 0% uh, interest from the Massachusetts Shrinking Water State Revolving Program. And we are attempting, uh, to, uh, get some grant money for solar panels that are included in the project. Our second biggest project that we have going in Westwood is something that you, you're very aware of as well, which is the Burgess Ave Booster Pumping Station, which, uh, eliminates our below-ground, uh, Burgess Ave Pumping Station, which, uh, basically was fire-deficient. We had the, uh, um, Fire Chief come on and we just think that that's a, a huge benefit to the town, uh, especially the 200-plus residents. They will now have adequate fire protection and backup power supply. Um, it's just a huge win for us there. And we're actually seeking, uh, conservation, uh, I'm sorry, gap of grant funding for conserve, energy conservation due to the utilization of, uh, VFDs, variable frequency drives and, um, and lighting. Um, the other project that we have in the books, although we don't know exactly when, uh, and I'm sure you folks are very aware of that as well, is the Canton Street Water Main Project. That, uh, Water Main is approximately 100 years old, which is pretty much, um, the, uh, standard when a, um, uh, Water Main has lived about 100 years, that's pretty much its useful life. So, we partnered with, uh, the DOT, um, uh, part of the Massachusetts Transportation Improvement Project, STIP as it's known. And of course, partnering with them, uh, reduce construction, design, and paving costs. And I will tell you from being the distribution superintendent for many years, uh, the whole goal is to, regardless of what town we're, we're doing work in, is to partner with the, uh, town when they're doing their paving, so we can, um, utilize our funds to get the most bang for the buck. Uh, one of the old executive directors actually used to say, uh, we're in the water main business, not the paving business. So that is why we look at the paving schedule carefully for both towns, which is why we're doing Milk Street in Westwood this year, which is done exceedingly well from a, um, a standpoint of how quickly it went. Uh, that is gonna probably be completed by the end of next week. We're hoping. Um, the last, uh, project that's coming up in the near future is the Fox Hill Water Storage Tank. That is, uh, 1932.44 million gallon riveted steel tank. Um, that we have not actually started the process. We looked at a couple of different locations and nothing actually worked real well. We, we, if nothing's in concrete, but we do have a footprint on the existing, uh, Fox Hill site that we believe we can switch to, um, the new tank over there when we get that. But you're probably looking five years away on that project. Um, on water restrictions, this is the first year that the Massachusetts Secretary of Energy Environmental Affairs Drought Management Task, Task Force as actually is the one mandating the water restriction. We have always, um, handled that ourselves based on the Pontet River Flow and lower, uh, Falls in Milton, uh, um, cubic feet per second river flow. However, that's kind of been taken away from us, uh, which at the beginning of the year, a lot of the public water supplies were, uh, kind of up in arms because there was a lot of rain, but they really didn't consider that we had a very dry, uh, winter. And we're back on, uh, track. We're actually at level zero, uh, which is basically normal conditions. Uh, as you know, with the weather, uh, being so hot, I don't know that that's gonna last much longer. But, uh, that is typical of August, so, um, we'll be changing the signs that we put out there. And another thing, just to show that we're always going for the money, we actually, uh, have solar message boards, which we haven't had to utilize so far, which is great, because it's not, uh, something that we want to do. Uh, you know, putting water restriction signs out, but we had them donated by Dedham Savings. So that was, uh, uh, another example of how we're, we're always trying to seek funding for our projects. Um, regarding want, water conservation and climate, we've, uh, we offer a hundred dollar, uh, credit for, uh, new washing machines that are, uh, available every seven years. And we have, um, uh, toilet, uh, a credit for toilet water, uh, I'm sorry, toilet replacement, uh, if they have the 1.28 gallons per flush or less, so they meet a conservation criteria. We also give out, uh, leak tablets to, so people can find their leaks. We give out, uh, low-flow, uh, showerheads. We also have, uh, rain sensors to put on to your irrigation. We have numerous things that we've been giving out for years, including the rain barrel, if you can see in the upper right-hand corner. And we do try to promote, uh, more so than ever, we've had our community, uh, I'm sorry, our communications coordinator has really been on board a few years now, and I think probably you can see that on our websites and our outreach, which we think is great. We, we've attended farmers markets, Weddeman, Westwood, and Dedham Days. And here and there, we'll do a presentation or something for like a men's club if someone asks. So we do try to reach out to the, the towns as much as possible. And we could go to the next slide. Another thing that we just implemented, as you can see on that video, if you look at that little black cylinder on the hydrants, you may notice them. This is, uh, another thing that I just personally, I mean, I've been, uh, getting these, uh, sensor loggers for when they were first available back 20, 25 years ago, and I can tell you, I got 10 of them. I'm sorry, eight of them for $10,000. And we got about 100, and we got on in the ground floor of this company. And they cost about $10,000 for the, uh, the 100. And then we got a grant, as you can see, from the drought resiliency and water efficiency, uh, for 42,000. So we actually have 650 sensors out there. And they will actually tell us we have a leak in as close to real time as we've ever had. And the, the issue before, the, the improvement that we've made in that is we have leak detection surveys that are done once a year. And once they go by that point, when they go by, say, Clappoard Tree Street in Westwood, that's it. That was the one time we have for the year to check for a leak on Clappoard. These will be there, um, basically reading 24/7. And of course, the, the goal is to reduce our unaccounted-for water, which is such a precious commodity, especially with climate change. And, um, uh, you know, 100-degree days like we, you know, we potentially have, so, um, and that, and one last thing, another outreach, we do reach out to the Pontet Rivers, River, uh, Watershed Association to, uh, do educational, uh, programs for the Dedham, uh, Westwood Public Schools. And I know it was a short period. I thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Um, and hopefully that gave you an idea of what we're doing, what we try to do to conserve, and how we try to be fiscally responsible.
Thank you. Um, that was a wonderful overview. I know you've had a lot of big things, particularly the PFAS treatment. In fact, I was looking at, uh, your webpage the other day. It looks like you finished the bid process, so I'm excited to see that moving forward too. Um, but thank you. That was wonderful. Um, happy to open it up to, uh, to board member questions or comments at this time.
Uh, if I may, Madam Chair.
Of course.
Uh, so, uh, to, there was a matrix that was shared with the board, uh, in relation to this presentation and, um, I think, uh, a lot of what, uh, Steve had covered, kind of touch upon, um, items CF26, uh, S2 and S22, if that helps, and, um, kind of placing the, um, the updates in, in regards to the matrix.
Thank you. Um, all right. Did any board members have any, any questions or any feedback or anything they'd like to share while Steve's with us? Mike.
Hi, Steve. Um, I was curious, how, how long will the plant take to be built, the, the PFAS filtration, um, plant? And as, as a comment, you know, thank you for pursuing that. It's definitely, um, one of the bigger issues that are on my mind in terms of the town's health and, you know, the community at large, so.
It's absolutely, uh, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak. I mean, we're, we're estimating that, uh, take, uh, in the area of, uh, a little over a year to, to bleep. Um, we have been proactive. I can tell you that, uh, you know, we were one of the first people to, uh, our first public water suppliers. We knew when that first came, when the grants first came out, that he who is at the starting line first will get the best deals. And, uh, I think our executive director, uh, did a, a great job. He is extremely proactive, and I think that's great. I mean, I think, uh, the water district is gonna be in great hands in the year. But, uh, you know, pursuing 15.5 million dollars, uh, at 0% interest over 20 years, that's as good as we can do, and we're not done. I, I just talked to, uh, Weston and Sampson to make sure that we get on the eligibility roster for our solar panels, which potentially could get us, uh, 25% of the total project grant, uh, to us. Although I can't promise you we're gonna get that. I wish I could. Um, but we're gonna, we're gonna pursue it as we try to, almost in every endeavor that we, we do. If, if the money's out there, we, we try to get it, to keep our rates lower. And, and, and actually, when you look at the, uh, the rates that we have right now and the amount of money that we're spending, keeping the rates basically in check, I think we're about middle of the road if you looked at all the public water suppliers and, you know, we are spending a lot of money. These projects definitely, uh, cost money, um, but we've gone years where we haven't, uh, had increases, and I believe I, and I believe it's a 5% interest, I'm sorry, 5% increase just on the meter charge, the base fee that we've increased for basically 94% of all, uh, of us. There was a whole, we could do a whole program, uh, based on the rate structure. It's kind of complicated and how we came to that, but we, we tried to, uh, not impact as many people as possible. And we did actually, one thing that we did, uh, definitely do is look at the commercial versus the residential. And the commercial, we're not paying as much as residential. And to be honest with you, with different boards through the years, I think years back with Lego's place and, and, uh, Westwood's, uh, Westwood Station, they were looking to get commercial people in it, you know, companies in here. They kept the low, the rates artificially lower. We determined that that's probably not right anymore, so the, the commercials did get harder than that.
Thank you. Um, a- any other, yes, Phil.
Good to ask my standard question. Steve, thanks for joining us. Um, if you had an ask for us, if you could, you know, just having this opportunity to ask the planning board to be more attuned to your work and what you need to do, what, what, what can we do to help, um, you complete the jobs that you need?
Well, I think, uh, you know, just the fact that we talk to each other, we've talked, I mean, um, you know, I know the, uh, the Westwood officials, I'm a Dedham guy, I gotta tell you, I know the Westwood officials better than the Dedham folks. I mean, I meet with, uh, Elijah and the, and the land use, um, uh, committee every when, beginning of the Wednesday of, of the month. And, you know, we, we shoot things back and forth. We're telling a different project. I like to think that, uh, you folks talk to each other and, you know, if you don't like, uh, some of the things that we're proposing, we don't mind hearing the feedback negatively and we want to improve. I think I've seen a lot of improvement in the last three years in a lot of different, uh, aspects. And you don't improve unless people tell you, you know, you can do a little better over here. You're not doing something wrong, so we don't mind, uh, you know, hearing from you folks and, you know, and, and the same folk in the, the way I feel is we don't pass some of these projects without folks like Elijah and Nora and, you know, the other folks, you know, basically passing on some of the things that we say to them. Uh, I think it's a partnership that, you know, we're very happy for. I mean, Westwood.
That's great. We, we believe the planning board's very appreciative of the staff because without, without Elijah, Nora, and everybody else, um, we would not be able to function, so, um, always have good, you know, communication and everything else, but you have an open door to reach out to us.
Feel free to contact me on any concerns, uh, you know, uh, if you don't have my email, I'm sure Elijah can provide it to you and but you have the phone numbers right on the website and happy to answer any calls or concerns on, on any topic.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Elijah, yes.
Hi, uh, so, um, Madam Chair and Board, uh, Steve, I appreciate the, the presentation. Just wanted to let you know how we are, uh, at the 25-minute mark, um, in terms of, uh, allotting time for, for this, uh, agenda item.
Perfect. Um, thank you. I guess if we have any other questions, we know where to find you. So, um, thank you. Thank you for everything you've.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate you showing up, you coming.
Take care.
You.
Thanks.
All right, um, so our next agenda item is... Sorry, I'm just loading it. AD Wilson Way: Consideration of Proposed Modification to a Consolidated Reduction in Required Parking Special Permit and Environmental Impact Design Review EIDR Approval to Install a Generator That Would Result in the Reduction of Four Parking Spaces at AD Wilson Way, which is the Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center, Continued from July 8th, 2025. Do we have anyone here from the applicant team?
Uh, yes. Let me bring him aboard.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'm Alex Perrin from, uh, Consigly Construction, where the general contractor performing the work at this, uh, location. Um, so the proposed project, um, is mostly an interior renovation. In the process of that interior renovation, they need to add some capacity for emergency power backup. Um, that requires the addition of a secondary, uh, backup generator, uh, located outside the building, um, on a concrete, um, pad. Uh, so that is the, uh, basis of the project really. Um, that's the whole extent. Um, the trenching for the, uh, conduits into the building are, is very minor between the building and the, the concrete pad. It's about, uh, eight or nine feet. Um, and it will require the removal of four, um, parking spaces along the, um, the side of that building. So, um, I know there were some previous applications, uh, on other projects for, um, exceptions, so, uh, we, we put this in. It has gone before the, uh, Conservation Commission already. Uh, and we are actively working on the interior portion of the project, so.
Uh, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but it sounded like you were wrapped. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a fairly simple project, uh, so.
No, I just wanted to make sure before I started soliciting input, so thank you. Um, Elijah, any, uh, comments from staff?
Uh, yes, so we have worked with, uh, the applicant in, uh, ensuring this, uh, project had the right, uh, the proper screening, uh, for the generator that's being proposed, as well as, uh, the one that's currently on site. Um, the, it was originally, uh, did not have any screening and, uh, what's being proposed now is this, uh, eight-foot, uh, vinyl fence. Um, I did want to, uh, however, just show that the, uh, proposed, uh, via this section detail right here, the proposed, uh, generator is actually, um, uh, quite higher than the actual top of the eight-foot fence. And so, if the board is, um, uh, so inclined to approve this, uh, project, uh, I would just ask that we include a condition that, um, asks for at least a 10-foot, uh, screening a- around this as well as the other, uh, generator. And, um, in the past, we've also had, um, conditions that apply to ensuring that the sound attenuation is, uh, is planned for accordingly, and, and so we do ask for, uh, testing for that as well.
Thank you. Um, okay, uh, I'll open up the floor to board member questions, comments at this time. Mike.
Um, Elijah, can you explain?
The recommendations they made. Sorry?
We lost the beginning of that. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. How's that?
That's better.
Uh, I was wondering if Elijah could explain the CONCOM's recommendations and kind of what that means, um, just practically speaking. So I know that I fully understand that.
Uh, yeah, so the Conservation Commission, uh, makes, uh, decisions as to whether or not the project has, uh, impeded within, uh, the, uh, the buffer zones or, um, is impacting any of the conservation areas in the air and, uh, proximity to the site. And they did, um, make a favorable determination for this project.
Was there a recommendation to add as a condition or something? I thought I saw something about, um, I could pull out. Did they make any recommendations on proceeding, um, you know, go- going with their approval or?
Yeah, the, uh, they, they determined that there was no, um, need for additional, uh, measures.
The, um, but yes, so, um, Mike, to, uh, follow up on that. So they did, uh, approve this on May fourteenth. Uh, there was a condition that, uh, silt sacks are installed in the two closest catch basins and old erosion control be removed from the site.
Okay. I do. Can you, so is that a, is that a, um, a, a stormwater management item? Is that just, uh, explain what that, the purpose of that is, um, for someone who's not an expert in that area?
Uh, yeah, so that, that's, uh, for making sure that, you know, construction, uh, runoff doesn't go into our bodies of water.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? Sean.
I'll just say I'm supportive of the conditions that the town planner Elijah outlined.
Agreed. Um, any other questions? I had one, but I'll hold it until everybody's had their chance.
I chime in on Sean's comment and Elijah.
Uh, since we're talking about conditions, that's kind of a nice segue. Um, could we see that drawing again? Because I, I appreciate the recommendation of the ten foot fence. But if I'm reading that drawing correctly, it still means there'll be about two feet of generator sticking out over the top of the fence. And I guess I'm just wondering if that is aesthetically consistent with what we usually require and, and how the board feels about, if I'm reading that, the, the, uh, the diagram correctly, it's, you know, maybe a foot and a half of generator sticking out over the top of the fence. And, and I just wasn't sure how the board felt about that.
Elijah, any thoughts about that?
Yeah, so, um, I'd have to.
I know. How, how deep is the concrete?
Yeah. Can I, I believe the, yeah. Oh, yeah. So the, uh, the larger s- substructure you see underneath what you would call the, the generator of eight point two feet that you see there, uh, is a, uh, belly tank for fuel. Um, that stands about two feet tall on top of the concrete and the concrete's planned to be a- almost adjacent with the, uh, the paving surface. So, um, there may be a few inches above a ten foot fence, but I don't think it would be, uh, two feet.
I was just confused because I see the line that says eleven feet from ground to there. And then like a little bit over the top of the generator is saying twelve point eight feet. So that's caught my eye.
Yeah, that's the lateral distance between the building and the generator, not.
I see. That's not the height. Okay, okay, okay. Um, so the eight point two is just the, I, I read that incorrectly. Thank you. Cause I was seeing that. I'm like, oh, I thought that's the line marking height. Um, okay, so it's only a few inches. It's not, it's not a foot.
Correct. And I, I would imagine if we did a ten foot panel, we could probably even have the, the posts be a little bit higher to reach the top. Um, it would just leave up a bit of a gap at the bottom, but it's probably at the top.
That would probably be helpful. I think that would be good.
I just want to make sure we're not looking at too much generator poke. I think I agree with you. I'd rather see a little bit of, uh, the bottom through the bottom of the fence, because I think that draws the eye less than seeing any generator above the top of the fence.
Agreed. I think a, a small gap at the bottom is preferable.
All right. That was the only, uh, that was the only question I had was just kind of is, is ten feet sufficient? It sounds like yes. Maureen.
Yes, and, um, uh, just to add to that, uh, they would be, uh, submitting a additional plan that shows the, the, um, detail with that ten foot fence. So we could then verify at that point.
Excellent. Thank you. Maureen, I saw your hand go up too.
Yeah, I just have one quick question. And with that, was there parking, you said there were parking spots that were going to be taken away?
Yes, this would, uh, would take away four parking spaces.
Yeah, because I, there was something written by Beta about the parking spots. And I'm not sure whether or not that is an issue that we deal with.
Uh, yes, uh, so, um, that is, um, something that, uh, is considered by the board. And just, uh, for reference, uh, the site does have, uh, an ample amount of, uh, parking per the actual use of the site. And, um, we felt from the staff side that, uh, the, the four spaces that were being taken up for that generator were, uh, not enough to impact the, the parking need for the site. Uh, if the board is so inclined to approve.
Cause I don't know, are there rules and regulations of how many parking spots certain people or certain buildings need for however much property they are?
That's correct. And, um, you know, the board does have, uh, some of that, uh, ability to, uh, make the determination as to whether or not, uh, they can, they can approve it.
Thank you.
No problem.
That's, I'm sorry, Elijah, did I hear correct? I'm scrolling through this, um, this memo again now. But did I hear correctly that even with the reduction by four, it's still compliant with that equation that says, you know, for X, for this use with this number of, uh, acres, et cetera, et cetera, that the number of parking spaces is still acceptable. It's still conforming.
Yes, that, um, the site does serve the, um, the parking does serve the site, uh, for its parking need, uh, per their use. And, um, you know, if this were to take up, you know, maybe eight spaces, then we'd be looking at some things such as a special permit, uh, for that reduction or an amendment to the special permit.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make one more comment?
Absolutely.
All right. And I, I read the beta report just because I read it. Um, and it said there was two hundred and fifty nine parking spots that's the place supposedly had. But with this now, I don't know whether it was, it was miscounted or whether some spots have just, um, gone away. But it's now down to two hundred and forty six. And I think Beta might have said that it was non-conforming. Does that make a difference?
They did get a special permit, um, previously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. Any other board member questions or comments on this application?
I agree with.
All right. Um, I'm not seeing any further discussion amongst board members. Uh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say worried was that, did you have another?
No, I forgot to lower it.
No worries. Uh, if there's no further discussion amongst board members, then, um, I think if we're comfortable with moving forward with this, I think we have a, we have a couple of motions we'd have to go through.
Uh, yes, I, um, recommending that the board, uh, approve this as a minor modification and, um, and grant the, uh, requested waivers in association with it and, uh, some conditions of approval.
I can read this. I moved that the planning board determine the modification of, as described in the application for modification to a consolidated reduction in required parking special permit and environmental impact design review EIDR approval to install a generator that would result in the reduction of four, four parking spaces at eighty Wilson Way, as described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on June seventeenth, twenty twenty five to be minor in nature. Um, is there a typo at the, the syntax of that read a little weird to me? I move that the planning board determine the modification of. I don't know what, um.
At the modification, uh.
The modification.
It, um, yeah. Yeah. How about just take out and say, I determined that the application for the modification. Elijah, go back and put the, the.
Um, yes, and Phil, it does say below, uh, the planning board determine the modification, dot, 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 as described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board to be minor in nature. So.
So I think we do this, then we, that should be able to.
Let me, yeah, let me try this again and you let me know if you think this doesn't center. I move that the planning board determine the modification of the consolidated reduction in required parking special permit, environmental impact design review EIDR approval to install a generator that would result in the reduction of four parking spaces at eighty Wilson Way, as described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on June seventeenth, twenty twenty five to be minor in nature.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Phil.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That motion carries. Um, we have a second motion.
All right. And move that the planning board grant the following waivers in association with the application for modification to a consolidated reduction in required parking special permit, environmental impact design review EIDR approval to install a generator that would result in the reduction of four parking spaces at eighty Wilson Way, as described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on June seventeenth, twenty twenty five. One waiver from strict compliance with section seven point two point seven point one point six of the Westwood zoning bylaw requiring the submission of a stormwater report. Two waiver from strict compliance with section seven point two point seven point two of the Westwood zoning bylaw requiring the submission of an exterior lighting plan. Three waiver from strict compliance with section seven point two point seven point three of the Westwood zoning bylaw requiring the submission of a full traffic study.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Mike.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That motion carries. I think we have one more to do.
Make a one. Okay. I move that the planning board grant the modification to a consolidated reduction in required parking special permit and environmental impact design review EIDR approval to install a generator that would result in the reduction of four parking spaces at eighty Wilson Way, as described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on June seventeenth, twenty twenty five, subject to the following conditions. One, except as modified by the conditions and finding thereof, the project shall comply with the project plans and with conditions of all prior decisions for the property in all respects, and the applicant shall pursue completion of the project with reasonable diligence and continuity. Two, if the project or any condition imposed in this decision requires any other permit, license, or other approval from any town of Westwood Board, Commissioner, or agency, or other Commonwealth or federal regulatory agency, the applicant shall make an appropriate application for the same and shall obtain all required permit, uh, all required approvals prior to the start of any work. If any condition of such permit, license, or other approval from any other board, committee, or agencies inconsistent with this decision, the applicant shall make application to the planning board for an amendment of this decision, and the planning board shall consider such application in accordance with the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter forty eight, Section nine, and all applicable planning board rules and regulations. Three, any proposed alterations, modifications, deletions, or changes to the decision shall be requested in writing to the town planner and building commissioner prior to implementation. A, proposed alterations which are considered de minimis by the building commissioner may be accepted as a note to the file. B, proposed alterations which are considered minor by the building commissioner shall require the filing of a modification application of set approval for review by the planning board at a publicly posted planning board meeting. C, proposed alterations which are determined to be major by the building commissioner or by the planning board shall be considered by the planning board as a formal uh, amendment to the approval and require a new public hearing before the planning board. Four, the applicant shall provide a noise study for review and approval by the town planner prior to the issuance of a building permit, which shall measure the ambient noise level and shall demonstrate that the generators will not exceed five decibels above ambient noise level. If the noise from the generator is found to exceed five decibels above ambient noise level, the applicant shall install appropriate sound attenuation materials to minimize disturbance to occupants of abutting properties. Generators shall be tested on weekdays between one P M and two P M. Five, prior to construction, the applicant shall develop and submit a compliant screening plan with a ten foot high solid enclosure around the existing proposed generators for review and approval by the town planner. Six, a copy of this decision and the project plan shall be kept on the project site at all times during construction. Seven, all project-related construction activities shall comply with the timeframe set forth in the town's general bylaws, Chapter two ninety two for noise and construction, which allows to work Monday through Saturday between the hours of seven A M and seven P M and Sunday between the hours of twelve P M and seven P M. Eight, the applicant shall submit as-built plans at the conclusion of construction, which shall indicate the location of all water quality units, underground storage tanks, pipes, and/or appurtenances that remain on the site prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or use. The as-built plan shall be delivered in a format approved by the Information Systems Director for compatibility with the town of Westwood G I S database. Nine, the decision shall lapse if a substantial use thereof or construction thereunder has not begun except for good cause within two years following the grant thereof. The planning board may extend such approval for good, for good cause upon the written request of the applicant.
Second.
All right. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, so, uh, I just want to, I guess, further clarify for, uh, Maureen. So, um, uh, so the, in the condition, as you can see in, uh, position three, uh, three B, um, this proposal, um, for the site already had a special permit that reduced that parking. And then the, with this, um, new proposal for that, for, uh, spaces being reduced, uh, the building commissioner did determine that it was a, uh, a minor modification, um, based on, um, the ability for the site to still function with the parking.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, so we still have a motion in a second. No changes. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll take roll call. Maureen.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
I vote as, I, I vote aye as well. The motion carries. I can vote. I can't speak. Um, thank you very much. Um, and good luck with the, uh, generator project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so our next agenda item is seven ninety Gay Street, consideration of proposed modification to an environmental impact and, and design review EIDR approval to permit the abandonment of a walking path at seven ninety Gay Street, which is the Pine Hill School. This was, uh, continued from six seventeen twenty five. And Elijah, I believe you have some information on that for us.
Uh, yes, so the, um, the Commission on Disability, uh, in which, uh, the board was seeking comment from, uh, did recess for the summer and their next available meeting would be in September. So, uh, in order to give time for them to reconvene, um, I would suggest the board continue this to the September thirtieth meeting.
Thank you. Um, do we need to make a motion for that? Do we have something or?
Uh, I, I do have, uh, a motion drafted just, uh, because it was, uh, mentioned, uh, or it, it was continued from the last meeting. Um, and then I guess just to add one more point, um, uh, the landscaping on the site, there are, um, several trees along Gay Street that look to have died. Um, uh, as we were mentioning, you know, the hundred and six degree weather days. So, um, I did let the, uh, applicant team and the schools, uh, know that they do need to be replaced. Uh, there was a condition for all landscaping to be, uh, kept in perpetuity. And so they are aware of that and, uh, should be preparing an update for the replacement of those trees as well, uh, at the September meeting.
Great. Thank you. Mike, yes.
Um, Elijah, I just, I was just curious in terms of, um, what the commission is going to be considering. Are you providing them with like, uh, a power?
Are you providing them with like, uh, a paragraph or a prompt? Are you getting on the discuss it? How are you, how is that information being communicated for them to discuss at their September meeting? I was just curious.
So I did, uh, give, uh, some background information, uh, summarizing. Uh, the discussions of the planning board, I did also send, uh, the recording of the, the meeting in which the board had, uh. Requested comment, uh, from them as well.
Okay, and do you expect like, uh, someone to come on, um, to talk to us? Would you expect them to just give a yes or no? Or send you a paragraph back? Do you have any expectation of what you might receive?
Um. It would most likely be, uh, between a yes or a no, or like a written comment, uh, saying that, uh, on behalf of the, the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, all right, with that, um, if someone wants to make the motion to further continue this, if Elijah, if you wanna, yes, thank you.
I move that the planning board continue the public meeting for consideration of modifying EIDR approval of the Pine Hill School at seven ninety Gay Street. As described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board, filed in the office of the town clerk on May first, twenty twenty five to Tuesday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty five at seven P M via Zoom. Where a Zoom link and associated calling numbers will be provided on the town's calendar on homepage at westwoodm.gov.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Mike.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
Maureen. Still muted. It's okay.
Hi.
Thank you, Sean.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. That motion carries and that item is continued. And I, I just realized I was remiss. We were joined, uh, a bit ago by Nora Lockname, who is our Director of Community and Economic Development. Um. Okay, so our next agenda item is, um. Three seventy-five to four eleven Providence Highway. Uh, this is a public hearing, so I will read a portion of the legal notice. The Westwood Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing on Tuesday, July twenty ninth, twenty twenty five at seven P M via Zoom regarding an application filed by Christian. Tercios for consideration of an environmental impact and design review, EIDR approval pursuant to section seven point three. Of the Westwood zoning by law for the purposes of installing seven wall-mounted E V charges. On the south side of the building with associated equipment that may result in a parking reduction. At three ninety-five Providence Highway and to approve a previously installed utility cabinet. With associated landscaping alterations on the northeast corner of four eleven Providence Highway. Westwood, Mass, oh two oh nine oh, in accordance with P B dash two five dash three one. The property is in the highway business H B zoning district and within the flexible multiple use overlay district three. F M U O D three and wireless communications overlay district W C O D. Land affected assessors map twenty-four lot zero zero two. Property owner is A M R Real Estate Holdings, Westwood L L C C O Group One Automotive Inc., Houston, Texas, seven seven zero two four. All right, um, do we have someone from the applica- uh, the applicant's team here this evening?
Uh, yes, looks like we do, and I'm trying to verify if the number may be. One of the applicants.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm looking to promote, uh. The applicants right now. All right. All right, we are being joined by, uh, Frankie, who is representing the group one. Auto team.
Thank you. Welcome. Looks like may still be. Getting into the meeting, um. I'm not even going to attempt to pronounce that last name because I think I'll wreck it, so Frankie, when, when you are able to unmute yourself, if you would kindly. Share the proper pronunciation of your last name.
I'm sorry, I'm doing this from a mobile device.
No worries.
I'm out of state right now and, um. It's just difficult where I am. I have like no reception.
Well, we can hear you, so, uh, that's a good start. So thank you for joining us this evening.
Thanks for having me. I know Christopher Sidroni. Is also on, um, and this is his project, the, I'm, I'm representing three seventy-five. Four eleven Providence Highway, but Christopher Sidroni is representing the electric company that's doing the work at Acura.
All right, um. Let's see, uh, so, um. I just allowed the phone number to speak if you could, uh, unmute.
Yep, hi, I'm here.
All right, just to confirm, you are Christopher Sidroni?
Correct.
Perfect, welcome. Thank you very much. Um, all right, um, then I think I'm happy to hand the reins over to you to kind of give us a. I know you, you're, you're both on, on, um, mobile devices, but if you could give us an overview of the project, that would be wonderful.
Sure, thank you for having us, um, and we appreciate the opportunity. Um, so basically what we're doing at Acura is we're going to be installing a, um, a brand new twelve hu- twelve hundred amp. Um, high voltage service to provide power to six DC fast chargers. Um, and then we're going to be breaking down, um, to, uh, you know, a lot, low, a lower service to, to provide, um. Power to a level two charger on the same subside wall. Um, so basically it's just gonna involve some trenching along the building, um, no spots will be affected. Um, they'll become, you know, there'll be spots for E V chargers, uh, but no, no spots will be, um, will be taken away. Um, there will be, uh, a pad mounted transformer, um, installed in the parking storage area of the parking lot. Uh, but right now that, the area where it's going to be installed is all hashed out. Um, it's not, it's not in any parking spots currently, so no parking will be affected. There will be ballers around the transformer. Uh, which are required by Eversource, um, you know, they'll determine the amount, um. Uh, you know, the amount of ballers that will, that will need to be installed, um, once we get approvals from the inspector. Um, but again, that won't, they, they won't affect the parking situation there either. Um, so that's basically it. It's a transformer, uh, going to wall mounted, um, panel, um, with the C T cabinet meter. And then from there, we'll be going out to six, um, DC fast chargers, uh, public use, um. And then from there, we step down into, we go into the building, we step down. Um, and then we'll be powering some level two charges for the interior, for the body, body shop, um. And the, and then coming back out and we'll be hitting a level two public, um, charger as well.
Thank you. Um, again, I don't want to cut you off, but it sounded like you were at a point where you were, had concluded.
Yes.
Okay, you're welcome. Um, all right, so, um, Elijah, do we have any input or comments from staff?
Uh, yes, so there was, uh. See if I can find the right, uh. Right view, um, so, uh. Doesn't look there's any issue with, uh, what's being proposed in terms of the charging location.
Elijah sounds a bit muted to me, isn't it?
Yeah, you just got very quiet.
Hello, uh, can you hear me better?
Much better, thank you.
All right, yes, so the, um. There's no, uh, issue with what is being proposed, at least for the, uh. The charging station location, uh, the transformer area, uh, is being proposed in the hatched area. However, given the, the Ballard's, um. Final location possibly being, um, determined by Eversource at a later date. It may take up a, a, another parking space, however, those parking spaces are in the storage, uh. The vehicle storage location, so it won't impact any customer parking or, um, employee parking, which, uh. Is, uh, uh, most concerning, um. There was, uh, some landscaping that was, uh. That was previously, uh, taken out for another transformer, and so we are asking the board if they are to approve this, um. This, uh, application that they, uh, that you include a condition that would. Ask for a replacement of those, uh, shrubs and trees, uh. For the site.
Thank you. Uh, yes, uh, again, I'm not gonna, uh, Frankie, I'm, I'm not quite clear on how to pronounce your last name, but I do see your hand up.
It's, it's pretty easy. It's gay, it's, it looks confusing. Um, Elijah, I just wanted to let you know, whatever was asked for. Um, the shrubs, the trees, including the island has all been installed. Um, feel free to go by, take a look at it, but the trees are back in place, um. We put a full island in with. The grass that you guys are looking for, um, along with the trees.
Elijah, if you would just, uh, when, if we can either get a species list or, you know, we can confirm, we do require all Massachusetts. Massachusetts native plantings, so we would just need to know that what you've chosen conforms with that requirement.
Yes, I can absolutely get that for you, but I just want to let you know, whatever was on the, whatever was on the sheet that Nora had given our contractor, that's exactly what they installed.
Great, thank you. All right, so if on our end, if we can just confirm that that. Is all good, then, um, thank you. Thank you for that u- update. Uh, all right, any other, uh, input or comments from staff, Elijah?
Uh, that is all.
All right, um, then I'll open up the floor to board member questions and or comments. Not seeing any hands, but I'll give it a moment, just in case. Yes, Sean.
Question for Elijah, if, if we include. The condition is you've proposed it. And given what the applicant is telling us about. Some of the plantings and landscaping already having gone in and been replaced, should that together be sufficient to cover all our bases here? Or do we need to do things a little bit differently? Given what the app has shared with us.
Yes, I think including the, the condition will, uh, just ensure that, uh, we have that coverage and. Uh, should be an, an easy fix, given the applicant's installed it.
Thank you. Is, was that? What you had, Sean?
That's all I, I, sure. The condition would line up with what the applicant's already done, so.
Understood, I, I support that, that's, uh, good to make sure that that is, um. Sufficient, so thank you. Um, any other board member questions, comments? Not seeing any. I personally am always happy to see more E V chargers going in, because that usually means there's more E Vs coming around, so, um, I appreciate that, um. Yeah, I had, I, my, my only question would have been about the landscaping and we've covered that, so, um. If there are no other board member questions or comments at this time, this is a public hearing, so I will open up the floor for public participation. If there are members of the public that would like to offer comments or ask questions, please feel free to raise your hand. We will enable you to speak, or you can utilize the Q and A. Portion of the Zoom application, just, um, a reminder that we will need your full name and address for the record in order to be able to hear your comments. I'll give that a moment. I am not seeing anyone, um, asking to share from the public, so at this time, um, if there are no other. Board member or staff input questions, comments, um, I think we could start entertaining motions.
I move that the planning board grant the following waivers in association with the application for environmental impact and design review, EIDR approval. For three seventy-five to four eleven Providence Highway, as described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board, filed in the office of the town clerk on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. One waiver from strict compliance with section seven point two point seven point one point six of the Westwood zoning by law requiring the submission of a stormwater report. Two waiver from strict compliance with section seven point two point seven point two of the Westwood zoning by law, requiring the submission of an exterior lighting plan. Three waiver from strict compliance with section seven point two point seven point three of the Westwood zoning by law, requiring the submission of a full traffic study.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the waivers? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Sean.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
Maureen.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
I vote I as well. That motion carries.
All right, I move that the planning board grant the environmental impact and design review, ADR approval, to install seven wall-mounted E V chargers at three ninety-five Providence Highway. And grant retro, retroactive EIDR approval of a previously installed utility cabinet with landscaping modifications at four eleven Providence Highway. Is described in the application for environmental impact and design review, EIDR approval for three seventy-five to four eleven Providence Highway, which was submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, subject to the following conditions. One, except is modified by the conditions and finding hereof, the project shall comply with the project plans with the conditions of all prior decisions for the property. In all respects, and the applicant shall pursue completion of the project with reasonable diligence and continuity. Two, if the project or any condition imposed in this decision requires any other permit, license, or other approval from any. Town of Westwood Board Commissioner or Agency or other Commonwealth or federal regulatory agency, the applicant shall make an appropriate application for the same. And shall obtain all required approvals prior to the start of any work. If any condition of such permit, license, or other approval from any other board committee or agency. Is inconsistent with this decision, the applicant shall make application to the planning board for an amendment of this decision, and the planning board shall consider such application. In accordance with the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty eight, Section nine, and all applicable planning board rules and regulations. Three, any proposed alterations. Uh, modifications, deletions, or changes to the decision shall be requested in writing to the town planner and building commissioner prior to implementation. A proposed alterations which are considered de minimis by the building commissioner may be accepted as a note to the file. B proposed alterations which are considered minor by the building commissioner shall require the filing of a modification application. Of said approval for review by the planning board at a publicly posted planning board meeting. C proposed alterations which are determined to be major by the building commissioner or by the planning board shall be considered by the planning board as a formal amendment to the approval and will require a new public hearing before the planning board. Four, the applicant shall submit a landscape plan for the in-kind replacement of all trees and shrubs removed from the property, both in association with the E V charger installation project at three ninety-five Providence Highway. And in association with the previously unauthorized utility cabinet installation at four eleven Providence Highway. Said landscape pa- plan shall be submitted for review and approval by the town planner with all plantings shown there on to be Massachusetts native plantings. Following town planner approval of said landscape plan, the applicant shall install all plantings shown on the approved landscape plan. During the fall planting season beginning on September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and ending on November fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Any plantings that do not survive shall be replaced in kind in perpetuity at the property owner's expense. Five, the applicant shall submit a sign plan for review and approval by the town planner for any sign is not included in this application. And shall obtain sign permits from the building division prior to the installation of any sign on the property. Six, a copy of this decision and the project plan shall be kept on the project site at all times during construction. Seven, all project related construction activities shall comply with the timeframe set forth in the town's general bylaws, Chapter two ninety-two. For noise and construction, which allows such work Monday through Saturday between the hours of seven A M and seven P M and Sunday between the hours of twelve P M and seven P M. Eight, if more than two vehicle storage spaces are removed to make room for the new utility cabinet and Bullards associated with the E V charger project. The applicant must submit an application for administrative EIDR approval to modify the overall site plan. In a manner that restores those additional vehicle storage spaces elsewhere on the property. Nine, the applicant shall submit as-built plans at the conclusion of construction on a lot. Which shall indicate the location of all water quality units, underground storage tanks, pipes, and or appurtenances that remain on the site prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for that lot. The as-built plan shall be delivered in a format approved by the Information Systems Director for compatibility with the town of Westwood G I S database. Then the decision shall lapse if a substantial use thereof or construction thereunder has not begun except for good cause within two years. Following the grant thereof, the planning board may extend such approval for good cause upon the written request of the applicant.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Sean.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Maureen.
Hi.
I vote I as well. The motion carries, and we have one more on this.
I move that the planning board close the public hearing for consideration of EIDR approval at three. I move that the planning board close the public hearing for consideration of EIDR approval at three seventy-five to four eleven Providence Highway.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Phil.
Oh, you caught me. Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That motion carries. That public hearing is closed. Thank you all. Good luck with the project.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right.
Have a great night.
You too. So that our next agenda item is, sorry, I've got papers and webpages and all kinds of things going on minutes. We have a review of draft meeting minutes from July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Was everyone able to take a few minutes and look at the minutes and did anyone have any changes or suggestions that they would like to incorporate? I did not have anything. If there are no comments or suggestions, then and if I remember correctly, everyone was present for that meeting, so nobody needs to abstain, correct? All right. Excellent. Then I would entertain a motion.
I move that the planning board approve the minutes for the meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Mike.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries. All right. Thank you as always, Jess. Uh, our next item is agency and committee updates. Uh, do we have any folks who are representatives or liaisons to other boards or organizations that have attended anything that they would like to share with the board?
I have.
We have a housing partnership meeting coming up on Thursday, but nothing to share at the time.
It's been pretty quiet over the summer. A lot of I know pretty much everything that I'm the rep to is on hiatus currently, so I've got nothing either, but I'm sure come September, that will all change. So.
Oh, sorry.
I um, I actually went to my first pet and bike meeting last Thursday.
Oh, great.
So it was a good meeting, a great group, great group there. One of the issues I just thought I'd briefly highlight was at the Pine Hill School. I don't know if anyone's ever driven by Gay Street around two thirty to three thirty in the afternoon, but when school's in session, they're having a problem with overflow from pickup where like the line is basically on Gay Street. It goes all the way out onto Gay Street. So they're trying to figure out way it creates a safety issue. I think there's been a few accidents around there. So they're trying to figure figure out ways where they can reconstruct the line and how to use that parking lot, but it's certainly an issue and I'm not sure there's an answer yet, but you know, stay tuned and but I thought that was an interesting because I I'm impacted by that, you know, five days a week, so.
Yeah, thank you. I have noticed that. It's kind of like now I won't take Clapper Tree when Zavarian's getting out and I won't take gay when Pine Hill's getting out and I'm glad that there's discussion around that because it is a brand new school. It now is the time to solve it because in theory it's we're only going to see more students there. So I I'm I'm glad to hear that that's going to be addressed because that is.
That's that's a good point. There's only going to be more play. Yeah, so it does need to be. There needs to be an answer at some point, so, but yeah.
Well, it sounds like there's already been some negative incidents.
Yeah, but there's a fender benders, you know.
Gotta get those kids.
Yeah.
Don't let me cut you off. You gotta get you gotta get aggressive.
I'm lucky. I I can walk there, so I'm one of the the lucky ones, but because it's two districts combined into one, other folks across town go there for different reasons. You know, the cars get packed up when and it's a bottleneck, you know, around three, three ten in the afternoon, so.
Yeah. No, thank you. I'm glad to hear that. That's good. Has anyone else attended anything? If if anyone, if any other groups that we are all liaisons to has actually been meeting. Elijah, has there been anything from Trick? Because I know we kind of handed that off to you.
Yes, so they also took a summer hiatus, but I will be meeting with the they did change the MAPC point of contact for Trick. And so I'll be meeting with her. Her name is Gwendolyn for a one-on-one at some point in the next few weeks.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Well, thanks, everyone. It sounds like that's it for agency and committee updates. So then our next agenda item is general miscellaneous updates and administrative items. That is typically when we hear from staff. So staff.
Uh, yes, so just a reminder kind of to Phil's point, the housing production plan is still underway and the housing partnership will be meeting to start some of the final stages of that process. And then the another item that I want to run by the board, I will be looking at updating our planning board procedures and looking to help with some efficiency and time management and proposing that all meetings have a ten PM kind of cutoff time and where appropriate with the with the agenda items, be able to move them on to the next planning board agenda. And so I'll yes, yes, so.
What the heck are we doing here? I don't know. Ten o'clock. What do we go to bed early? Come on.
I think there will be times where it's probably not viable depending on the law and the schedule, but I I think that is a a wonderful goal to be able to do that because I think that's something that various incarnations of the planning board have have asked about before and it hasn't been super feasible before, but I think the way that our cadence is shaking out right now that it might be more feasible. So I'm definitely a fan of if there are things we can move off the agenda, if it's getting late, if it doesn't jam us up in any way, absolutely. I think we should absolutely try this and if we find it doesn't work for us, then we can revisit, but I think that's a great idea. I'm a big fan.
Again, reappointed as our timekeeper.
Yes.
For sure.
I think you need a special hat or something to go with that role.
You need a buzzer or a bell.
Or like the music at the Oscars, you know, they can play us off, but no, I I actually really appreciate that. I think that that the willingness to look at agenda items and and be able to if if it's viable for us to shift things that that we can, I think trying to achieve that is going to be good for everybody. So thank you.
It's also good for the applicants and the public because realistically you have applicants that have made, you know, significant projects and then they're waiting till eleven, eleven thirty and it's crazy. So.
And to that, a lot of times continuing something really is dependent on the applicant allowing us to do that. So hopefully that 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 will, you know, there'll be a synergy there that they see the value in moving it to the next meeting as well. Because then everybody's fresh when when we get to an item instead of starting an item at eleven PM, they can start at seven. So yes, I think this is a brilliant suggestion. If my colleagues disagree, we know that's I'm open to that as well, but I don't I don't foresee anyone really complaining about trying to time box our meetings without sacrificing our process. And you know, I I think it's achievable. So thank you, Elijah. Yes, Sean.
I would just add, Elijah, you probably already do something to this effect, but if we ever have kind of the non-controversial applicants, which I think we've had a few of this summer. Yeah, we might have a couple of questions around the edges, but sometimes I feel like we get the fifteen to twenty minute explanation of a project that we could probably hit in five minutes and maybe we can just advise the applicants ahead of time like we think this is pretty well explained to the board. Feel free to keep your remarks to just a couple of minutes and then we'll kind of we can get on with it. And I know that's not always a perfect science, you know, it's not going to be very controversial versus what is, but I think there are some that are probably easy calls. And then the second is you can always let us know if you think there is something that's going to be a bit longer of a discussion ahead of time. If we know a few days in advance, at least you might be able to say, hey, just coming with your comments and your what you want to ask pretty crisply. And I think all of us here are willing to do our homework to do that ahead of time.
Agreed. Yeah, definitely.
Great. Thank you.
All of that. Yeah. Mike, yes.
Along kind of along these same lines, not 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 similar, but in the same, I guess, subject area, you know, just just throwing this out there. I'd love to have at least one you know, planning board meeting that's sort of in-person hybrid. We know we're we can be in the same room together. I think it would be fun. I think it would be a good thing for the for the town. Some people might show up, you know, maybe we you know, maybe if we have a couple, you know, an interesting, you know, we do it when there's a very interesting thing on the agenda that, you know, might garner public comment or something like that. Again, you'd make it hybrid. You know, only once, only maybe, you know, one to two time, whatever, but do it just just could be a fun, a good experience to to be in the same room as well.
Definitely.
I agree.
Yeah, I think I think doing something like that typically like if I remember from the old days, there was a value add when we had like large plans and this was before I was on the board, but I used to go to the meetings and if it was like a large scale physical set of plans, there was a value add for the board to be able to to look at it all together rather than on a smaller screen. So maybe if if we have something coming up, you know, within the next few months that looks like it would involve kind of some detail work on a set of plans, that might be a good one to kind of consider doing in person.
Yeah, I think it's good to have hybrid opportunities because people easily can check, you know, zoom in, you know, and that I think does create greater opportunity for participation of the bubble, but definitely agree with Mike. You get better synergies and just kind of looking each other in the eye and just and looking and hearing people in front of you.
So I will definitely just mention that I think, you know, specifically in person versus specifically remote are probably a lot manageable, but the the hybrid, there's still some logistics that we're trying to figure out in terms of implementing that. So just give a word. A heads up.
Okay.
That's something I I'll be sensitive to because I have gotten, I've heard from a lot of residents that they do appreciate the ability to dial in virtually because otherwise they wouldn't be able to come and participate real time at all. So I am curious about what's going on with hybrid because I know that's been kind of a challenge for us. Not us, the board, but for the town for a while, but and not to say, but Norwood does it, but when we had that joint meeting with Norwood, they've been doing hybrid for quite some time and and it's been quite successful. So I tell me who I need to talk to to make that more of a priority because I do think it's important if if us or any board is going to start trying to do more. It it is, it's difficult. I I would love to be able to participate in more school committee meetings, but because there's no hybrid option, it's just in person. I can watch them after the fact, but I'm rarely able to physically get there. So I think just in general, as a plug, having a a hybrid solution for all boards would be a nice thing to move forward. So.
Yeah, I I really echo that because I, you know, with the select board starting at six, it's so easy for me. I'm typically still at my desk. I I just pop it up and I listen along and see what's going, you know, check in, but the school committee makes it a huge challenge to be able to do that. So I think that would and I and I would just say I'm probably typical of many people, you know, kids and work and life and everything else. It's just sometimes really, really tough when it's solely in person.
Right. So that's not really our problem to solve, but if there's if there's some advocacy that I or we can do to kind of help prioritize that technology efforts, whatever it is that we need to do, I'm on board to kind of help make that a priority because I think that I am hesitant to not have an option for people to be able to participate, not just watch or watch later to participate virtually because I have heard from a lot of people, younger people with kids and older folks who don't necessarily want to come out as late as we go, even to ten o'clock would be more than they would want to physically be somewhere to that they they appreciate having the option to participate live, you know, real time, virtually. So that's just something that I think I'm going to be sensitive to regardless of what we decide to do. So that is a helpful distinction. Looping it back, that was all a very long way of saying thank you for pointing that out because I was thinking hybrid. But if it's an either or, that's something I I would want to personally consider a little bit more about which meeting we would choose, you know, which topics we would want to choose if we were to go in person. So.
Yeah, in some respects, it might be in person for the less controversial, simply because all of a sudden you're potentially cutting out a lot of people that might want to either watch or participate in that. That could be a little bit of some awkward, so.
My thoughts exactly, Phil. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Good discussion. Any other comments on on any of that or anything really? Because that was our last agenda item. I think, yes, I'm not making that up. Any other topics for this evening?
There we go.
Then if there's nothing else at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Sean.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Phil.
I really should say no, but I'm not gonna. I as well.
I do recall once.
Yeah.
Many years ago, planning board member voting no on adjourn.
No, just, yeah, no, in the previous iteration, Kate would have probably had a meltdown. Anyways, yes, aye.
Yeah, you would. That would not have been good. I vote aye as well. So thank you all. We are adjourned. That motion carried.